Okay. Morning, everybody. Eight fifteen on Tuesday, April twenty eighth. Call the meeting to order here.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and minutes as presented.
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
And I second it.
We've got a motion to approve the agenda minutes and accounts payable. Is there any discussion on this? No written comments. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries.
I need you to sign off on the one set of accounts payable and I'll take it into her.
I have a workforce development. Did you sign it someplace?
Um, just initially somewhere down there. I don't know. Maybe above. I don't know. Everybody's making their own things these days. Did you sign off on it?
Oh, I didn't get the yellow one there.
You did have it, you just...
Geez.
Oh, is that perfect? I'm just gonna sign that. See, Daisy? Go ahead. There we go. Okay, I need you to sign this quickly, please. Wait, you want me to do your updates, please? Thank you.
Thirty? Geez.
What's that?
Thirty? Oh, three ways.
Three.
Yeah, three ways. Westos says waiting.
I have none, none though.
I did, thank you.
I have nothing on supervisor updates.
Yeah, it was a slow week for me, too. I don't have anything new. We've got a few economic development projects that are early, early in the mix, but they're still a lot of work to do before they move forward.
We had a map of finance and board meeting, uh, last Thursday, and, um, hopefully our next month, we're gonna be all together. So, we're gonna see if we can space out and finally see face to face. So, that's what we're talking about.
A question for you, Carol. Have Susan Watson gotten anything to use?
As far as?
Having the board. I think it, I think the county attorney has to look at it and the board has to approve it. You know, you... I better give her a call.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything other than she sent us what, you know, what we owed, and that's the only thing I've gotten from her lately, I guess.
This is something we discussed at our last board meeting, and she says, "Well, I have to get that to the auditors."
Okay.
And I haven't seen it.
I don't recall seeing anything.
Okay.
Okay, we got the county engineer coming in here in a few minutes, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you listening, so bear with us for a few minutes.
Good morning, guys.
Morning, Cory.
How are you, Cory?
I'm, I'm alright. Busy, please. But, uh, it's alright. Um, jumping right in, I do have a couple utility permits. First one is Century Link. And they are boring underneath, uh, Pony Creek.
Underneath Pony Creek?
Yep, so they'll be, uh... Excuse me, they're replacing, uh, which line is it? Oh, it's, uh...
Pony Creek Lake.
Pony Creek Lake.
Oh, yeah, you can go deep.
Let's get up in the water.
We're gonna do that with the water.
This is a new one, sorry. They're doing some replacement in, uh, up in Pony Creek, um, subdivision, um, which is, uh, private roadway, so, so a lot of this... I told them they needed to get approval from, from the landowners, uh,
Association.
To the homeowners association, but they do, um, come out to Deacon Road when they go underneath Pony Creek Lake. I guess I got a picture. They go from Follow or Fant, uh, underneath the lake and come out here at Deacon, so they are in our right of way here at Deacon. So, they did not give me a start date for that. It'll be coming up. The other utility permit is for Ames Construction. They're gearing up to get going on their, um, uh, large borrow, South Bungee Avenue. And with it, they have a de-watering plan, and part of that de-watering plan is to pump water, uh, to the west over the levee. To get, to get to there, they have to cross Alice Road, so they're gonna be installing a, uh, thirty-six inch?
Under, underneath the road?
Underneath the road, and so it's gonna be a thirty-six inch, uh, casing and then a twenty-four inch pipe. Uh, yeah, thirty-inch steel casing pipe and a twenty-four inch HDPE de-water.
Are they gonna dig that in, Cory, or are they gonna bore it?
They're gonna dig this one in, so we're gonna... Alice has, uh, access from both directions, the north and south. We will coordinate with them to make sure we put out on our, uh, road notification app when, when this happens. It should be a couple hours.
Right.
But, uh, so it shouldn't be much of a nuisance.
Thirty-six inch casing and a twenty-four inch pipe.
Mm-hmm. So, there'll be, there'll be pipe. I mean, they'll send the water down this drainage ditch. And the landowners know it's coming, um, because Ames has been really good about contacting these guys, so, pores. And so the water will come down here and they'll, I'm not sure if they'll dig a ditch on the land or if they're gonna pump it. They wanted to cross right here, but they got a lot of utilities, like two utilities kinda in the way, so they're gonna come across here and it's gonna go down that drainage ditch.
They've gotta come back north then, right?
Yep.
Go down and then back up. Really?
I hope it doesn't bother any of the farmers' lands and stuff there, any. That's flatter than pancake.
It is.
It is. There's just not much fallout in that area. Alice.
So, is this the roof farm right here, Cory?
Uh, I believe that's poor.
Oh, he's got that many grain bins.
Yeah, it's poor.
Okay.
John's got some there, Bernie's got some there.
And this is also poor. So, and, and, uh, Ames has worked closely with, I mean, obviously, they're using Por's land for a lot of their borrow. So, he's well aware of the de-watering plan, so... Uh, didn't mean to grab that. So, I think they'll cross right about here.
Go in and then back out.
So, they'll drain through here, cross through here, and get it up to this drainage ditch. And that will get it to the levee, and then they'll have to pump it over the levee.
So, how far in the ditch do they go for this pipe? Are they gonna go right in the ditch? They're gonna go right in the ditch.
Here's the cross section.
Okay.
And we're gonna look at possibly leaving that pipe as well. Just because you do have these two drainage stitches. We were lucky that the flood last year didn't get up to this level, but this would provide some relief.
Are they okay leaving, may I?
Uh, the landowner has, um, come to me in the past asking us to put a tube in here before, so, yes, I think this could be great with it.
Oh, okay. Alright. Do you know how soon they're gonna start bringing in their?
Uh, the conveyor belt?
Yeah.
In the next thirty days, is what I've been told, so...
It's gonna come on rail?
I don't know. I guess they did ask them.
Oh, you think they will?
Yeah, they'll truck that in pieces.
Well, otherwise, they'd have to unload it off the rail, then haul it in each.
Yeah.
Coming from California, right?
I, I thought it was Texas, but...
Oh.
I think it's Texas, but I, I can always ask. As far as moving along, I guess, uh, my first formal action, assign Mills County twenty twenty traffic marking contract. You guys awarded this to Vogel Traffic Services, uh, last week, and this is... Um, now we just need to sign the contract and Richard will get it sent off to Vogel for their signature and I don't, uh... We do a good job about not trying to coordinate until you have a signed contract. That's something that, uh, even though it's a local project, state DOT has always pushed us big on, you don't, you don't start your planning and everything with the contractor until you have a signed contract. And so, once we get that, we'll get them scheduled, and I'm not sure when it'll happen during the year, but we'll have it on the books and ready to roll. The, the amount of the contract to repeat was seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, ninety-two cents.
I'm sorry, can you give me that amount again, Cory?
Seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, ninety-two cents.
Do you have a motion to approve or to sign the contract?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract of the traffic markings for Vogel.
Second.
We have a motion of a second to sign the Mills County twenty twenty traffic markings contract. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I got the marker out.
Okay, this next one really had me confused.
Okay, no problem, um...
The Super Two Highway upgrade.
Uh, yeah, I, I, it, it makes it sound like, uh, we're talking about Highway Two, right?
Yeah, I know, that's the part that kinda freaked me out.
Um, I received an email from Union County Engineer, Zach, uh, Youngsley, and and multiple counties along Highway thirty-four have already, uh, already completed, or, or who'd I get this from? Let me, let me just look it up, so I can tell you correctly.
You know, we talked about this last fall. There was supposed to be a meeting.
Yeah.
And I think...
I went to the meeting that didn't happen.
Didn't happen?
Yeah.
Nobody showed up?
Um, they had rescheduled, but since I wasn't...
Everybody didn't get the memo.
Since I wasn't actually invited, I was just gonna kinda crash the, the meeting anyways, 'cause I wasn't invited. So, I'm now on the mailing list.
Okay, okay.
I found out about it through some connections in Red Oak, and I said, "Well, you oughta, you oughta go to that, that, that..." So, I calls Cory. I says, "Cory, do you..." No, but he says, "I'll just venture over." Well, in the meantime, the guy didn't call me back and said they recanceled it, so Cory goes over and he calls me and I go, "I..."
And where was the meeting at?
It was supposed to be the community college.
Community college there in Red Oak.
Well, at least you didn't travel a couple hours or whatever.
Yeah, I didn't go to Des Moines or something.
Would this be to make thirty-four four lanes?
Uh, so a Super Two would be adding, basically adding more passing lanes, uh, on the hills, um, more turning lanes, uh, it's...
Higher speed limit?
Higher speed limit.
Possibly. Um, it's...
I mean, amen.
My, my, my largest experience with Super Two is, um, my hometown, McCook, put in a Super Two, or they put in a Super Two between McCook and North Platte. Heavy-traveled highway, uh, eighty-three. But that's what it is. It's just a few more passing lanes on those big hills.
Make it feel a little better.
Yeah, get, gi- give you the opportunity to get around the, the trucks and semis a little bit.
For the people that are driving, the speed limit.
And the traffic is just getting heavier and heavier.
So, um, let me see who I got this from.
So, is this in the starting stages, Cory?
Yes, and, and what they're doing right now is Monroe County, uh, sent me this template, um, saying, "Uh, accept this letter of support for the proposed Super Two Highway, which runs through Mills County and others on Highway thirty-four. As a board member for the past several years, I believe this would be greatly beneficial to our residents and others. Please feel free to contact me with any questions concerned." They're basically trying to gain a round of support, um, showing, uh, counties and, and other private entities that they support the idea of having, um, upgrades to Highway thirty-four. Instead of going straight for a four-lane, uh, roadway, this is, I guess, a smaller step towards improving that the flow, the traffic flow on Highway thirty-four. Um, they've sent it to, uh, also, um, RPAs, uh, regional planning agencies. So, they're, they're just, right now, it's just about gaining, um, rounding up support and, and trying to get a, uh, coalition or, or, uh, a group of counties and all the users to, to kinda push the hand of the DOT.
Yeah, it's on.
They're doing a, they're doing a study on twenty, or on eighty, going to six lanes on it in a lot of places, and the biggest problem is, okay, for instance, Cache County alone has six crossing highways. Who pays to expand those six crossings? Is it up to the county, up to the state, up to the feds? You, you know, uh, if they can shove it down to the county, it may never get done.
Exactly right.
Because...
Oh, my God.
Yeah, you, stop, think what you gotta dig back. Those are long. Yeah.
Six lanes, you got, you got a long bridge.
A lot of money.
Well, I'd make a motion to, uh...
Authorize the chair to sign?
Oh, yep, authorize the chair to sign.
And I second it. That'd be wonderful.
We have a motion of a second to have the chairs sign the letter of support for the proposed Super Two Highway upgrade for Highway thirty-four. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Got your letter there?
Yeah, so Union County, uh, Lucas County, Monroe County have all already sent in letters and, and a couple of the RPAs on that area and, and also, uh, Tac.
Dayer has a campaign. It goes right to them, right?
So, is this like a five-year planning, a ten, I mean?
This is, this is purely just trying to gain support and trying to tell the DOT, we need this.
Well, no, Dayer would be, would be eighty.
Yeah, and Dayer would be eighty, Adam would be twenty-four.
I, I think that's kinda what the approach is right now, it's just...
Well, and this isn't anything new. I mean, they've been...
Yeah, and, and I think, uh, four-lane winding would happen on Highway thirty-four east of Des Moines. Seven eighty-four happens on a...
Sure.
To the west.
No surprise on that one, is there? Well, baby steps.
We're neat.
Very cool.
What else is going on? How's your building going?
It's going up quick. Uh, we've, we've done some, uh, quite a few slab pores now, roofs on, or at least the, all the steel is on top of the roof. I, I haven't got out there this week yet. Just making a lot of progress. Uh, we've done color selections, which, thank goodness, Kim helped me out with some of those.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, that was, that was one of those where, "What do you think about these patterns and this pattern?" I'm like, "Somebody else wanna..." So, so Kim sat on that one, and that was kinda tough, too, 'cause we're, we're doing it on video conference, and, and so they have one camera on them talking, one camera, somebody's moving it to the samples and...
Get it in?
Yeah, and it's, and so, but they ordered some more samples that they're gonna drop off and, and we can look at them in person. Haven't had any issues, uh, recently. We had, we had the re, the masonry issues at the beginning. Uh, they got those nipped in the bud right away. Otherwise, every time I, I review the, um, the reports now, things are a lot better. We've never had any major problems, but, um, we're not seeing any problems now, so...
It's good. Yep, Jim's been good to work with.
Yeah, uh, a little, uh, a little awkward sometimes how they request to pick up their payments, but I guess it's, since they're here, why not pick it up instead of having us mail it to them?
Through the street, yeah.
Um, otherwise, no, they've been, been very good communicating with us, and...
What are they doing to the stadium? They're still down there. Do they get the elevator in and?
Yes, they're just replacing some concrete and finishing some stuff up, fencing.
Oh.
Just finishing it up.
Uh... For general discussion, I'm gonna forget something. I already forgot something. Um, we will have a, a contract to sign coming up here for the Silver City Highway project overlay, three miles, Highway thirty-four to Gaston Avenue. To do that, if you remember, Carol, we set you up with a digital ID, uh, through Doc Express, so you could sign it, 'cause you were the board chair last year. Our new board chair is Lonnie. Um, and we're not the only county that's going through this where, well, gosh, we're gonna, you know, we have a rotating board chair. We're gonna have to set this, set it up every single year, and there's been two, uh, counties mitigated this two different ways. Um, they either do a resolu-, they do a resolution either way, but one of the resolutions is to every single project, a resolution authorizing the engineer to sign off, uh, or sign the contract through Doc Express. Or there's a resolution to, uh, establish one board member as the digital contract signee for, for, uh, these DOT contracts. I suggest going with, um, second option, since we already have a board member with a digital signature ID.
I remember how many times we had to do, redo, do, redo.
You don't think it'd be easier to have, aren't you in the system then?
I do not have, uh, a digital signature set up, but...
If we do a resolution, we can fix that.
But I can definitely do it, but we also... It means every single project, we have to do another res- a resolution saying, "For project XYZ..."
Why can't you say for all DOT projects, why can't you do a resolution that encompasses any, and, and just for, ask for permission during the board meeting to authorize you to sign?
I don't know, but, uh, according to other multiple county attorneys, it has to be per project. We got this through ICEA, um, County Engineers Association, and, 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 uh...
How many projects are we looking at, Cory, roughly? I mean, I, I know they're not the same every year. One, one to three a year? We can do a few resolutions for those, can't we?
I would, I, I mean...
There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be long resolutions. I mean, there are, there are, there's a sample, yeah.
Yeah, and the point being is, sometimes those things need to be signed when you guys aren't around, and it's easier for him to be able to do it with the authorization, yeah.
That way, we got a copy, or the board has a copy, you know, of what's taking place.
Fine with me. We can go with that route.
I'd much rather have...
And, and it's just a template. It would just...
It would, too.
It would just be a change.
Project number. So, every year, we'd have to go through the same thing? No, uh, I mean...
Well, you have projects that cross years, too, so you're gonna have one of us signing on one and one of us signing on another.
Was it easy, was it, Cory?
No, so that's why I was kinda, I didn't really wanna have to go through that myself.
They didn't wanna recognize you, or what?
They, well, they just, they just didn't wanna take our password, they didn't wanna take address.
I'm gonna...
And then she wasn't there half the time, so we had to hurry. Oh, yeah, it was, it was quite a deal.
I'm gonna look and see exactly what the reason is or why we have to do it, each project. Someone had a good answer for it.
But to me, if it's in the board minutes, I don't know why you, I mean, where the board authorizes you to sign off on project, blah, blah, I don't know why a resolution would have to be in place, but they may have a reason.
Well, I mean, it does.
Yeah. There's people more knowledgeable about law than I am. So, when a certain county's, our attorney fills it, needs to be specific to every project, we'll do this every letting, local system, and I got, I got this one from local systems as well.
Richard, it has to be specific to each contract. That is what we came up with. I have no problem doing that, Cory, if you're good with it.
And Mark?
The board is.
Mark was my old boss at Woodbury County. He was just awarded the, uh, NACE County Engineer of the Nation.
Oh, neat.
Last week, yeah, I sent him an email about that. It was quite the honor, but, but, yeah, it's basically, um... Gosh, where did, where'd you put it, Nikki? Right here. But, yeah, even local systems said that, yeah, it needs to be by per, per, uh, project, so, but it, it's, we have a template. We just change the, change the project number each time and date, so...
So, instead of doing a motion for the board... So, instead of doing a motion for the board to authorize you to chair, we'll just end up doing a resolution that says.
You can do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, I don't care, and like you say, it's a template, all you do is change the numbers.
Yep, it shouldn't be difficult. Yeah, Mark, recognize this NACE, it's a twenty-twenty, er, I, I thought that was funny, urban county engineer, yeah, Woodbury County's an urban county.
Not urban.
Yeah, that was.
Do you do the, do you go to the NACE meetings and that sort of thing?
I have not gone to, I, I would like to, um.
Do you have to be in, I mean, you're obviously a member, or?
I'm not currently a member, but I get all the updates and through, through ICEA, I, I probably will be a member, or sign up to be a member soon. I was looking at going to this year's conference, but, um.
On Zoom?
Yeah, until, until it turned into a online, um, they do have, uh, a program through ICEA that they pay for, um, a county engineer who's never gone to the, the conference, their, uh, their travel or, or their hotel, I can't remember which one, so, I'll try and do that next year.
Very cool, yeah.
Good.
Um, other general discussion, we talked last week about, um, upgrading level B roads to level A standards. And, and kinda reasons why our policy is the way it is. I've been approached, um, about possibly vacating a, a level B road, um, then landowners would be able to rock it and maintain it how they see fit.
Drive way.
Exactly, it'd be a private roadway and, and it wouldn't be any of our, it'd be out of our jurisdiction, it'd be out of our maintenance. And, and so, we're still evaluating it, um, the biggest thing, whenever we vacate a road, is we cannot land log somebody. There has to be access given to all landowners that use that roadway for access, um. So, it would come down to making sure whoever had access previously still has access either, um, either by easement or from another roadway. If this person is serious about, about, uh, us vacating the roadway, I'm gonna make them kinda do the legwork, um, go out and contact the landowners. And, and there's really only two, because I believe this.
Back in Dexter, isn't it?
Yeah.
And they both want the, they both want the road, so.
I believe this is just recently sold.
Re, re, hassled, uh, starting back here.
That's right, and so, so it's really just two landowners, and, and so.
But then we have no liability whatsoever.
No, they care.
We would vacate the road?
So, if somebody, I'm just, you know, hypothetical, can go from either north or south as an individual, they end up on it, something happens.
It's a driveway.
It's a private, private property, I would advise them to maybe put up a gate. Near end, um, to prevent that from happening.
So, what do they do when they start building houses on there?
Uh, it'd be like in Pony Creek Lake, um, it'd be a private roadway, um.
All of Pony Creek Lakes.
They would have to, they would have to grant an easement to every person that owns a lot, uh.
My road's a private, it'd be the same as mine.
Do you guys grant an easement to every lot owner?
Yes, it's in our, it, that was in the subdivision when it was created, but yes.
Uh, we're still evaluating while, if there, if there's any benefit for the county to keep the roadway, well, first glance, I can't really think of any.
So, what happens, if something happens to the people and they sell their property to someone else, and then the road is as is, do, is there ever an opportunity that you would have to take it back, or?
I don't think so.
No?
Only if we wanted to, but.
Only if they brought it up to our standards.
Uh-huh, yeah, and they'd have to bring it up to our standards, or I guess it could still probably be a level B road, I, I'm not sure on that, whether they'd have to.
If we accept it, but once it's theirs, it's theirs.
So, just wanted to bring it up in our general discussion.
The only ones we've done, Lonnie, is up in the northern part of the county between Pot and Milk, as far as closing.
Yeah, yeah, we closed that one, yep.
Closed that one up there.
Yeah, that was a shared road between us and.
But they do not own it anymore, they, they just sold it.
We hustled, they just store it back.
They're in behind us, and I just wanted to give him a call.
They just sold, so.
Oh, Charlie just was happier as a lark.
Well, they made a trade.
Uh, just looking at it, uh.
He saw the right though. Carol. That's where you're working, that's their address, not the other.
Um, anybody traveling, uh, I assume uses two hundred and fiftieth street instead of, instead of the dirt road, um, or my half fee, um. Knowing that this is probably gonna be developed into lots, sometime in the future.
For a half mile through there, or is that a mile?
I think it's about three quarters.
There's some nice building sites.
Well, it's just under a mile.
What was that, to Moon?
And so, uh, we would, we would, if we were to vacate it, we would definitely vacate it between the intersections from Nagel up to Moon, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna stub it out.
What goes back to Charlie would be his private road then too, from the north.
Yes, so, I mean, we currently have a turnaround, um, up here, where we maintain Moon Avenue, let me turn on the right aways. So, we, we currently have to turn around up here already, so we're not creating another dead end road for us to turn around.
Yep.
It's, it's already there. So, so the maintenance concerns isn't really an issue as far as operator.
There'd be no maintenance for us, you know.
Well, I'm saying even, even having to like turn around there, because we, we already have to turn around, so.
Well, on Moon there, yeah.
So, yeah, we would, we would wanna vacate it up to that intersection and all the way down to Nagel.
They would have to.
Yes.
Yeah, we would require that.
Yeah.
And he has done a good job of maintaining that little section.
He, he, he cleans properties up.
So, this might be something in the future, we'll see, um. The gentleman I talked to who's looking at purchasing some land out there, he's, he, he must really like the land, because he's, he's kinda throwing, he's the one that kinda started this, so.
Yeah, there's a few people looking at it too that wanna buy the bulk of it, and they want the road closed, because they want it rocked, and we won't rock it.
We've gone over, kinda gone over that.
Right.
But, uh.
Good.
Other general discussion, we, um, I have a couple of meetings with landowners on, uh, the proposed alignment of the new roadway on, between Bungie and Applewood, trying to get that ironed out, we get some letters from them, saying, showing their willingness to, to donate or sell, um, at appraisal value for, for our project, which we did receive, uh, two and a half million in the rice grant for, um, finishing up, working with MAPPA currently to finish up that application to the EDA now to try to get the fifty percent match, and have, get our project totally funded, um. Also.
So, what do the landowners, are they, you said you gotta give them a letter?
Trying to get, to go with our EDA application, we need to, um, we need to show that we can readily, uh, acquire any land that needs to be attained. And so, MAPPA thought just a letter showing the property owner's willingness to, to sell or donate would, would be sufficient with our application. We've talked, I've talked to all of them in the past, nobody's had any, uh, major concerns, uh, they, they all see the value, uh, in their land increasing with, uh, the new access, so. I, I don't see any, I don't foresee any major hurdles on that, um. Uh, so, we're working with MAPPA, like I said, to finish that application and get that sent off, um. Also, FEMA to continue wrapping up, um, our projects, or, or I guess, uh, working along with Iowa Homeland Security, uh, I had a long meeting with them yesterday, or last week. Oh, what else we got going on, uh? Hundred ninetieth street's moving along, uh, good pace, we're, all the earthwork is, uh, is up to final grade. They are topsoiling, uh, ditches this week, and, and we're hoping to get cedars in next week to, uh, protect those, uh, those large forest slopes from any damages of the spring rains, and, uh. They are looking at doing the deck pore over the railroad, uh, in the next two weeks.
Good.
So, they got those beams set and they've been tying steel, uh, the last week or two, and then, it'll be, move on to, uh, paving after that. I was told June, what was the first week, June, June eighth, I think was when, uh, the sub, the paving subcontractor was gonna mobilize in, and so, uh, it's been a heck of a project, I mean.
It's a good time for it to be done.
A headache, and so, it's really great, going out, I went out there Friday and seen, it, it's, it takes, it's, it's taken shape, uh, you can tell what we were trying to accomplish.
This is where Cory.
On a hundred ninetieth street, the railroad overpass, um, so, so that's just. That, that is the project I'd really like to wrap, or.
Like everybody would.
Yeah.
Well, the access for the locals out there too would be tremendous.
We are doing a little change on ditches, um, we had so much deposited material, they had the four slopes, toe of the four slopes of the ramps, right here where it meets the existing ground, where the flood deposited material, so instead of going out there and digging it out and removing it, trucking it away and paying for all that, we're just redesigning the ditches, um, a little bit higher. That's been a hurdle, repair work, we finally got that hurdle taken care of as far as, uh, documentation and, and change order wise.
So, what are we talking, maybe this fall, the grand finale?
Uh, end of the summer, the, they're working, they have, we've worked with the contractor to grant them some more working days, that gets them to, um, beginning to mid-August.
Okay.
Depending on rain and, and everything else, so, so that's their deadline, and, and they think they can hit that deadline, so, so. Maybe this will be my birthday present, August tenth.
Once they get down to the main line, they'll be, it'll move quick.
Yeah, um, main line, cure time, shouldering, we can open up the roadway, then any other additional small parts, uh, guard rail. There has to be a fence over top of the rail, um, so, so that fence, guard rail, any other little thi- odds and ends, we could, we could complete with the road still open, and not start.
Yeah, that does, we can get the railroad flaggers out of here.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I keep pushing them, they haven't responded to my last, uh, um, response as far as, uh.
Overcharging.
Overcharging us on days that the contractor did not work.
Mm-hmm.
Still waiting to hear back from them, um.
It's probably in a small print somewhere, but even though they're not working, they get a, get paid from the office.
Yeah, I'm sure, it, it won't be a simple, oh, yeah, you're right.
Right, right.
Last week I also met with, um, Western Engineering and HGM, who did the contract administration for two hundred and twenty-first street overlay. Uh, went over the checklist, or punch list for, for little repairs and, and things that still need to be completed on that project, so. We got those all lined up, and, and so we might see some, um, some single lane closures on two hundred and twenty-first street here in the next month.
It's a nice road, it's turned out nice.
And it's, it is, it is very nice, I, I mean, one, one little blow up on a, there up by Apple or, or, uh, whatever road, where we had to put in the concrete patch, otherwise the paving went awesome, we had, we've had some issues where we did culvert extensions. And having such a short right away. We weren't able to put in as much culvert extension without doing, um, right away acquisition, so, so that has been a challenge, and we understand that, why the contractors had issues on that, so. But it'll be, it'll be great to, to kinda wrap up a couple of these things that are still open. Otherwise, that's, that's what's going on in the office, um, still taking applications for our, our job posting till the end of the week, and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Busy, uh, Silco, um, last I talked to our road foreman, getting lined up for June, um, do the, what was it, twelve miles of, of, uh, roadways that we tore up, and then another, I think it was twenty miles of, uh, overseal, so. Get them, um, our guys, our guys do have quite a bit of prep work before, um, state built comes in to, to actually do the seal coat work, because we, we do all the, we, we rock the road, um, and, and do any patching and, um, even, even do, uh, weed control on, on these stretches to make sure we get a good product when state built comes in, um. So, so that's gonna be what a lot of our maintenance crews working on, we've been doing bridge cleanings, uh, recently. Uh, getting some, some of the salt, sand, um, that, that is the only places where we go out and clean off, uh, the sand we deposited through the winter. A lot, a lot of it's because these bridges, um, the guard rail or, or whatever railing there is, doesn't allow, uh, flow very well through, especially older ones, so. So, we have to go clean it, or else we're gonna get standing water pooling on top of the deck, so, that is the only time we will go out and, and, uh, sweep off what we deposited over the winter.
And Cory, when do you guys usually start oiling, um, for the control of dust? Is that coming up pretty soon?
The dust control, um.
Right.
First, first checking week of May, isn't it?
Yep, uh, it's, it's right there at the, uh, gosh, I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the application, but, uh, the way that works is, um, we have two different providers who contract with individual property owners. They fill out their application, then they come into Secondary Roads Office, pick up stakes that we have sitting in the waiting room for them, so they can still get to that. And pick up their stakes, and they go out and they stake, uh, their, uh, their start and end in front of their roadway at the distance that they are paying, uh, one of the two providers, and we do our best to make sure we rock, uh, we, we get the list from, um, the two dust control applicants or, uh, providers. And we do our best to make sure we get some rock down, some newer rock down in those areas that way, because we know, we, we try to stay off them as much as possible, um. After that, dust control's gone down. Uh, and the, and the contract that the property owners have with, uh, Husker Cam or Jared Coe, says right there in the fine print, county does reserve the right to, to blade through and maintain the roadway, um.
We have to.
And we, and we have to sometimes, because the roads just, they require some maintenance throughout the year, but the good thing is, there are two applications, and when it rains, it, it kinda activates the, those chemicals again, so.
Right.
So, they don't lose all their dust control if we do have to go through and blade, but, but we do work, uh, with.
And it works.
Yeah, it does.
Wonderful, yeah, do they ever have times when they have to come back and re?
So, they do two applications, and so, uh, they're doing in May and then end of July, I think, or August.
Okay.
And, and that lasts then through October time, so, so, yep, uh, we've, we've been going through a lot of stakes, uh, people have been coming in.
I bet.
Yeah, just send them to my office and, and we can get them an application.
I will do that. Okay.
Uh.
Did they come up with anything on that driveway yet, or they're just still looking?
Did they come up with anything on that driveway yet or they're just still looking?
Uh, she was heading out there today, we talked about it this morning before I came in.
Bill McGoyne's got one that the road's getting eaten away by the drainage part of it and then it's too narrow.
So he will need to fill out a driveway application for widening. If if we are gonna widen the driveway, he needs to fill out a, a driveway permit application.
And and you know, we, we allow them to go to forty-five feet and that's what they need on this. Seal coat road because you can't make the turn. Well, then they're cutting off the back wheel.
Starts breaking the road.
It's breaking the road up.
He already has three driveways, I'd love it if we could just remove a driveway and maybe get him to come in from here, come around, but I didn't.
You go, you go talk to the wife of that department up there. I'll let you handle that part.
No, he and I talked about it, um, it's, it's, it's gonna have to go quite a ways over here. To avoid this crossroad pipe.
Wow, is that a ditch Cory right there, or is that just eating away?
This right here, that's eaten away.
Put a pickup in. I think he would go with the extension of the tube and stuff.
Which place is it?
Bill McGoyne's. Up on Cary Avenue.
Yeah, this is an old, old uh, street view, but you can see it was washing away back in two thousand fourteen.
Was a road there?
Even in, even in two thousand fourteen, you can see that, we're having problems.
He cut it too short.
And so we can't, we can't really extend it to the east because of this guy, power pole. Well.
Can they move that? Wouldn't it be easier to go that direction?
It would be easier for us if we could extend it fifteen feet this way, but.
I don't, I don't know.
But.
Would they, would they come and set the power pole on the other side of the driveway?
It's worth asking. But otherwise.
He said he would move that ornamental thing there, he said that could leave.
Otherwise.
He said that.
To miss this uh.
But I don't think the other one said that.
I didn't press that subject. I know better.
Otherwise to miss, to miss our crossroad pipe, it's, it's gonna have to be almost in line with his uh, his shed. Where'd I go? Yeah, it, it's gonna have to be. Forty-five foot, yeah. That's kind of where we're talking.
That'd be alright.
Yeah, he will need to complete a, a driveway permit. To, to move or widen, so.
Yeah, cause there's nothing you can do to the west end of that, you can't extend anything. Cause of the, of the, of the cross tube.
Cause of this, yeah.
I'd go the other side. I'd go that way.
Is that power pole is an issue?
I know, but I.
I believe so, I'll double check my calendar.
You might check and see if you, if they'd moved the power pole fifteen feet east or move it.
Oh, they'll move it. Get your checkbook out.
Yeah, it depends who's paying.
Well, I mean, it might.
There's certain spans, there's a maximum span they can have between.
They try to go three hundred feet.
And that's really too far.
Well, that's, that's what they shoot for. Well, we're, we're, he's on it, okay. Nope, I don't have anything this, this afternoon, I'm trying to. Complete some of the things we talked about. I still get sad every time I look at my calendar and I see, like tonight I'm supposed to go to Nebraska Creighton baseball game, gosh darn it. Need to go through and remove all those uh. All those fun things that I had planned.
You can't do anymore.
Well, could get him basketball, he can go run up and down the court.
You putting a hoop down at the new engineers building?
I didn't plan on it, but. My dad has an old uh. Uh, a nice old glass one that uh, when they upgraded, he's a high school coach out in western southwest Nebraska. He, he, he kept it, might see if he put that up in the shop.
The guys would love to do that.
Little wellness down at the shop.
See if anybody can, wants it.
See a few hoops, I can see him taking advantage of that.
I would definitely uh, take any uh. Any challengers on the game of horse. Alright, that's all I got. Thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to appoint the appeal board for the FEMA buyouts. We discussed that briefly last week and had a handful of names, everybody, anybody say yay or nay or?
I had.
I did.
Yeah, you did, I did, I, I contacted, of course, Robin Swanger said she would be interested. Chad McColister said he would be interested in doing it and you have Troy Granger.
Troy Granger and. And then um, Julie McIntyre.
You said Janelle, is it Julie or Janelle?
Janelle, yes, the other one said she just couldn't do it. So.
Two, three, four, do we need another one to make it offset or to have a five? Your gentleman didn't answer, she tried to call him, he didn't answer.
He never responded back.
Do you have anybody that you came up with wanting?
No, no, it's, those are real good applicants, I think the four can get it done.
Four can do it. You could put one as chair and non-voting member and. Let them elect their chair and. Non-voting member, that way the other three can, you know.
And of course, I couldn't tell them the exact time, day, blah, 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 so.
We don't know.
Maybe if one could.
I don't anticipate there will be a lot, um, there'll be one coming up rather soon. Um, I don't see it taking a lot of time from them and I just basically told them what the parameters were, you know, what they need to do. And um, both of them were on board and said, yeah, sure, whatever. And you know, I guess we'll have to kind of figure things out until things kind of open up, whether they actually can meet together. Or we just have to hit the information to them and then. Which is probably what, so we'll need, I'll need contact information, um. Well, I, go ahead and you could, did you tell them pretty much that they got it or that?
I told my column today.
Okay, so then get contact information for me, their names and uh, email addresses. And uh.
So we have Chad McColster, Robin.
Swanger.
Swanger, Janelle McIntyre, and who's the other one?
Troy.
Troy Granger. Four good applicant, four good appointees. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve our uh. Appeal board for FEMA buyouts.
Second.
We have a motion by Vinton and a second by Crouch to approve Chad McColster, Robin Swanger Phillips, Janelle McIntyre and Troy Granger. To the appeal board for FEMA buyouts, is there any discussion? Carol, you will contact all them? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alright, motion carries three to nothing. Go grab Jill.
Since Kara Morgan is running for supervisor, is she gonna be off of the watershed?
I don't know.
She's on the ballot, so.
I don't think anybody else running against her, is it?
I, I don't know, but does that mean she's gotta be off of the watershed?
I wouldn't know why, it would be just a second job for her, I mean, just like, if anybody else, I mean, you know, just like Donnie has a job.
She can exclude herself from, from uh, participating in any uh.
Cause I know at first this took a lot of time. But maybe we're not. He's got the worst door or something.
Morning Jill.
Morning.
We have Jill Ford here from the treasure and uh, give us some updates.
Okay, um, we're getting a lot of phone calls because of the treasure announcing yesterday that several things are opening up. And us not being one of them, state stations are opening May first, but they have never really closed. So they are available, so they're thinking that, that we are too, so we're, we're fielding a lot of phone calls right now. Um, my plan is once that they do say that we can open up, is I would like to open up by appointment only. And the reason being for that is you see on a normal time, the number of people out there, there's no way we're gonna be able to do social distancing. With all of those people out there in the, the hallway. We uh, with motor vehicle, what we're going to recommend is people continue to use the Dropbox, online services or mail them in to us. Leave the appointments for titling, uh, do a half hour appointment. You, you can, if we can title two vehicles in that time, that's great, if we do three, that's great. Uh, but you only have a half an hour to get your business done before we go on to the next person. Uh, several of the, the offices have asked people to give like a cell phone number. And then stay out in their vehicle and then when we're ready for them, we call them and we meet them at the door. And escort them in to, okay, you are gonna, we're only gonna run two auto windows instead of three like we've normally been doing. So we can have one person here, you're six feet social distancing, the next person here, if we do any taxes, we'll need, put that person clear down at the other end. Same thing with driver's license, we'll do appointments only, we'll have them come in, we'll give them, allow them a half hour. When they come in, we close the door, we only have one person in there at a time. Unless, for instance, you have a fourteen year old that you have to sign for a permit or something, then one parent can come in. Uh, no other siblings, no, those kind of things.
Putting uh, tape like you see other stores?
Right, uh, somebody said they have little, little markers, some places have little markers that say stay back here. The only thing I worry about is Steve with the. Buffer, I mean, so it's gonna have to be something I can pick up at night, put down the next day, that's where.
We've seen some of those in our election stuff and I, uh, Lori has a copy of one of them, they're little discs and they say six foot and I think you could.
I've got some of those at home from the kids using them in the front yard for kickball and baseball and stuff like that, so I could probably bring those in.
Yeah, just something that we can pick back up and and put out. Yeah, because what, if we use tape or a magic marker or something, it's just gonna get buffed right off the floor, so.
Takes me spray paint, that'll make them happy.
We would prefer to leave that front door locked if we possibly can and then have people call, then we open the door for them. Because we're gonna turn walk-in people away. Because we're not allowing walk-ins right now and the state doesn't allow that either right now. And we're gonna try to prioritize, like, if you have a CDL and you need to get it renewed, we're gonna do you over. Over the guy that's just wanting a simple renewal, cause you can still renew online. Uh, even, and the testing, that's, we have another problem with our testing, if I've got somebody in there testing. I can't have somebody in here issuing, cause I don't have six foot social distancing. So now you can do the permit test online by, with a parent. It, it's called skip the trip, it started out, you could do it at school and then just come in and be issued. Now since school is out, they are letting the pa- parents do it, if they pass, they have a, a sheet that says they have passed and then they're allowed to come in. And then we'll issue the permit, but then we don't have to have them setting their testing. Now if somebody does need a CDL testing, I'm usually here every morning by seven thirty. Yeah, I would be more than happy to ha- let somebody come in at seven thirty and do a CDL test. But throughout the day, again, if you have somebody taking a CDL test and they're gonna take forty-five minutes or whatever. I've lost that time where I could be issuing something. And if we, if we get to the point where we're starting to do just simple renewals, we can probably do those every fifteen minutes. You know, so then we could drop that to fifteen minutes and do, do more of those. But right now, we're just trying to help the people that really are essential. With the, with especially with CDLs, work permits and those kind of things, we would like those people to be. We've had several people ask us, okay, if you're not opening on the first, do you have a date in mind and we said, no, not it. At this point, it's kind of at what the governor.
Yeah, we've.
When she.
We briefly discussed it, but we haven't decided anything, you know, in stone yet, but I, I, I think it's. Yeah, we need to get everything ready to be opened before we open.
I do have uh, Carol, like Carol had, we had discussed about the uh, Plexiglas for. The elections and how we can go ahead and use those. When, when, and then give them up during the election, those will work out fine for my two auto windows and my tax window. But driver's license is just such a crazy jumbled up mess. Uh, so I did call Red Oak Glass and I called another company in Liberty, Iowa. Uh, they both say it would be roughly about three hundred dollars to do the driver's license portion. Um, I don't know what kind of bid you got on just the driver. Ju- what, just not, what, did you get, did you break it out to like, this is what driver's license is gonna be or?
I probably could call back and see what, what that was gonna be, but after he gave me that bid, I just.
Jill, if you want one, get it and we'll make sure.
The only good, the only thing is, um. Red Oak, I could probably send Gary over to pick it up and save freight versus uh, the ones that, from this company in Liberty. Look a lot nicer, but the ones from Red Oak will also do for what we needed to do.
Works for you.
Okay, but that's the one I'm most concerned about because she is right there. And the other, the other thing is several counties have said they are going to request customers to wear masks. If they come in without one, they're turning them away. Do you guys have any feelings about that?
We may have some access to some extra masking so that if. And then that's what we've done with the um, the, the people that go into the recorder's office, cause they are making them wear the mask in there, the abstracters. So.
They're gonna need them there.
We have provided them and I think we probably could, so.
Oh yeah, if we leave them out there, they're gonna.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, if the recorder's going to require them, we should require them for you that way, it's one standard.
Universal, yes, yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm going to recorder's office, I gotta wear a mask, no, I'm going to recorder's office, why don't, you know, no.
And personally, I would, from having to wear a mask for almost two weeks in our office. It's hard, it's hard to do your work, it's hard to talk to people, it's hard to, and when you're, yes, and when you're face to face with somebody. You kinda. You know, by the time you were done, it was, it was awful, so, so we, so they thought if you have your customer wear them. If, if the girls wanna wear them too, that's fine, I have no problem with that. But if they also don't want to, then this way they're at least covered. Because the customer has one on, okay? Um, would you have any, I talked to Lou Anne briefly about that, the front door still being locked. Because that's what she's doing now, the customers call, she meets them there, she opens it up, helps them out there, now we could bring them into the counter. Uh, same way with your um, abstract people, they, they can come in and then they can do their thing. But if, I'm afraid if we don't keep that door locked, people are gonna come in, now they stand there and rattle it. I mean, it already says it's closed, but, so maybe that would help with the social distancing, that's what's. As big a problem, I think, as anything right now is.
Slowly transition our way into it.
Right, exactly, so to, to the DOT, I'm calling what we're doing a soft opening. Cause we're not gonna completely open to the public and have the herd of people that go clear down the stuff. cause we're not gonna completely open to the public and have the herd of people that go clear down the steps.
You'll get everyone here too, from Pot to Free Montana.
Yeah, exactly. A few county-
Mills County's open.
Yeah, and a few people have, have done that. They said they are only doing their county driver's license only. They're not gonna do any out of county, like Pot County coming down and, and things like that.
Our people could go to the state licensing place, right?
Yes, yes.
And at, at the, in Council Bluffs?
Right, uh, they will be probably open back up the end of this week because she opened malls back up. That's why Council Bluffs had to close, is they were in a mall setting. And so they ran temporary out of the Omni Center, but you still had to make your appointments through Sioux City to get, to get there. And they're still doing essential people as well.
Carol, does Larry have any extra masks or, or just those simple-
We'll have to visit with him.
White ones, do you think?
Yeah, I think we can get those paper ones.
Yeah, like those, yeah, like those little blue ones we were, we were wearing.
Yellow or blue or whatever.
Yeah, I think there were like twenty of Minnebocks or something, so.
I mean, he's, we've got some extras ordered, we ordered some more for election stuff. I mean, I think we'll be okay, um, as far as that goes because we're not anticipating that many, you know, that much traffic, I would assume. See, and the other side of that too is we're, we're gearing up with voting in person. That's the other reason it's not really good to open up because her people would coincide with my people and we couldn't ever keep that social distancing.
No, there's no, no way.
So we're doing the out, you know, come to the curb side and hoping, hoping that the people will take advantage of, you know, the vote by mail or go to the polls and we will do curb side for any of those that want it. But I think it would, it's, yeah, it would be a disaster, I think, to open this all.
Yes, and, and try to have everybody out there at the same time.
There's a lot going on now, I mean-
There is, there is, yeah.
People need to get their stuff done.
Um-
I think I have to do my license.
Yeah, and then the president did extend the, the real ID out till twenty twenty-one, so.
You won't have a lot of people rushing with that.
Right, cause that was, that was what our big, before we, we closed, um, probably, gosh, I would say at least seventy-five percent of it was people who wanted that gold star on there when they're renewing because if they do it at the time of renewal, it doesn't cost them extra. But if they wait and have to come back, then it's a ten dollar duplicate. So they, they're wanting to do it at the same time. So we're probably gonna still see some of that. But now that they've dropped it back to twenty twenty-one, maybe, maybe right now, hopefully not quite as much.
Right.
So.
No, we'll do our best to work with you. We, we do work for the public, so we have to, all of us try to do our best.
Right.
We'll get there.
I just, I just keep thinking that maybe if we do it like this, there will be less frustration than, than some saying at two o'clock, "Look out," and you've got a line down the steps and say, "Sorry guys, you've waited in line for two hours and we're not gonna be able to do this cause we're closing at four," so.
Right.
But I will, I will, uh, visit with Red Oak Glass and see what-
Get your glass ordered.
Yeah.
Talk to Larry about some masks.
Okay.
Cause all they've done, like BP down here in different places, they just hang in with little change or something, it's nothing fancy.
All different kinds.
All different kinds, uh-
And you think Red Oak Glass has plexiglass?
Oh yeah, they're doing, they made, they did Montgomery Counties and Page Counties, both, yes.
And he's- That's where I came across trouble. You just aren't finding a lot of places with plexiglass.
Um, he's, they're doing hospitals too, cause then he, he sent me a picture of one that he's making for one of the hospitals and, and he said each one of them that I want would be roughly about a hundred and fifty dollars. And that's the other quote I got too. It was just real close to the exact same thing. And I said the only advantage, and I did ask Red Oak Glass and he said-
Is it sitting with a piece of plywood on the bottom?
Uh, no, they, they have the acrylic feet, just, just like what, what you have, so. But, but I-
See, ours are supposed to be here, I think maybe another week. He said a couple of weeks when we got ours ordered, so.
Well, Red Oak told me that he should be able to have it to me in a couple of days. He was getting another, another shipment of plexiglass in, so. So that's, and I mean, yeah, and it's, it's nothing fancy, but I don't need fancy.
No.
And I mean, and eventually if it's permanent, then we, we can figure something else out if we need to do something permanent, so.
And we also looked at, um, I gave Jill one of the shields that Larry, you know, for the, the, um, people that are the EMA, emergency people and those that wear the shields or any of those. She's got one of those for, um-
Yeah, Shelley tried it on and she said, "I could not wear this very, your breath." I don't know how hospital workers do it, but it, it comes right back at you and she said-
It's really close.
And she said, and it, and it was hard to hear. And, and what we're doing is so sensitive and sometimes you have older people that don't hear, hear quite as well. So, you know, you're saying your license is suspended because of your vision or whatever. You don't want the whole courthouse to know that and so, and that's why we're gonna close the door in between, uh, customers too. We can close that so she's one-on-one with that person over there. So, so we put a little bit of thought into it, but, but I do think the appointment is, is something that we really need to, to stick by for at least a little while until things really start, start getting back to normal.
Feel comfortable.
If I, is there ever gonna be a normal, I don't know, but-
There will.
But we've just, we've got a, as long as she's saying social distancing and those kind of things, that's what we need to, that's what we need to do, so. So I will get my bids and get everything ready to go and we'll get that glass up.
Order.
Just get it ordered.
And we'll, we'll go from there, okay.
I tried.
Yeah, I know you did, yep, so. And it's very popular now, so I, I know I looked on Monarch's website on, uh, some of the prices of plexiglass and can make sure.
Isn't it crazy?
I just go like, whoa, I mean, we're talking little tiny pieces.
Supply and demand.
It is, exactly, yep, yep, so. Uh, any other questions for me here?
Good.
I'll just-
Oh, the tax sale.
Oh yes, uh, delinquent taxes have been suspended. We can't send out our delinquent notices on May first like we normally do. And the tax sale, uh, for the third Monday in June has also been suspended until a later date to be determined by the governor, so. Uh, there were no, there are no penalties for, um, for late payments from March into April and we're probably, uh, who knows what else is gonna happen before this is all over, so. So we won't be getting in the normal, large amount of money that we do in June for the tax sales uh, because we aren't having it, so. They're trying real hard to keep everybody in their, in their homes and try to get these taxes paid up. No deeds on tax sales that are ready to be redeemed. We can't do, as of April twenty-seventh, we can't do deeds right now. They, we're just in a holding pattern. So, till we, till we find out, so. But there's lots of, lots of stuff out there that's just not, not normal right now, so.
I wonder if that's true with Nebraska, I wonder if they're expanding their tax.
Theirs is different than ours, they don't, they don't tax at the same time as we do, they're like-
Yeah, cause I have several people that, that miss our dead- Yeah, that miss our deadlines because they think it's the same as, yeah, and several states have their own deadlines and it's, it gets complicated if you own property in more than one state, so. So, okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Thanks Jill.
Uh-huh.
It's about all we can do is adapt and move on.
You know, it is, and you know-
We had a crystal ball, it'd make it a lot easier.
We want, I mean, you know, I'm sure people are not gonna be, I, I, everybody's itching to go wherever.
Yes.
And we understand that, but we have to keep our, I mean, they've got a full crap crew again. We gotta keep our people safe as well as the public safe. And it's like, you know, it's just, you know, ease into it, I know, I know.
And the simplest way I've seen it done, like, you know, oh, well, they're gonna come and install them on. A lot of them just use a chain with a hook.
Right.
Then they just drill holes in the plexiglass, lift it up to the height you want and then it just hangs there. Yeah, it's movable stuff, but you still have the shield.
These have, have feet, yes, and they're, they're, it's easy to move away, pick it up, put it down, you know, kinda deal too, and it looks like-
One's functional.
Yeah, yeah, so it's-
Yeah, Eddie's hired an outfit to come in and put theirs in. I give them the dimensions, the counter and everything, they come in and they mounted them while they got their card reader sets right here. Well, they bring the frame out and they set it right next to the card reader. Well, you could read from the bottom, but you couldn't swipe the card. She's standing there and she's looking at the guy and she's just-
I remember it was the engineer who did that.
And he looks at, she looks at the guy and she, she, she just says, "You have to move this." "Oh no, I'm not now." She says, "This is the way it's drawn up, this is the way it's measured, this is the way it's gonna stay."
Well, guess what?
Guess what? So she tears it all loose and just ties it down with good old Gorilla Tape. I mean, it doesn't take anything to hold it. Like she says, how, well, then they had it slow, but, you know, to pass money in under.
Oh my God.
Well, bum guards is slow, they can't use their scanning machine underneath it. Makes, the girls are real happy, they're just old.
I still say Hobby Lobby was awesome. Clear, you know how they sell the clear contact and they put it like a shade? That was very inexpensive and still a shield.
I would make a motion to, uh, amend Resolution twenty sixteen A.
Yes, to approve amended Resolution twenty sixteen A, which was the compensation board requirements and, um, there was a typo in them that needed to be fixed. So I'm requesting that you approve the amendment with, um, the things fixed.
Can I second it?
We have a motion by Crouch and a second by Vinton to amend Resolution twenty dash sixteen A, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Crouch.
Yes.
Vinton, yes.
Motion carries three to nothing.
Sign on your specific lines, please.
Just one?
One line, yes.
No, one paper.
Yes, please.
Is that what she was talking about, Carol, something like that for everybody?
No, the paper.
Okay.
Well, Larry will be up here, we can say something to him then.
There's like a piece of money.
Oh, yeah, 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 perfect. Yeah, those will be handy.
Next on the agenda is discuss formal action authorized chair to sign tribal notification letters concerning Nishna Batna River-
Yeah.
River watershed project.
Yeah, there's like twenty-one letters that we've signed them all, Lonnie's had to sign them all before and we have to sign another section of them, so, um, unfortunately he doesn't have a signature page, so.
Part of the process.
Signature stamp, so he has to sign them all up again.
I'll approve the motion.
Can I second it?
Get a motion by Crouch, second by Vinton to authorize the chair to sign the tribal notification letters for the Nishna Batna Watership Project. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Task order two point six point one, Phase One Archaeological.
Okay, I didn't think she needed to call in, um, or we needed to call. I think it's, it's pretty much standard. It's just a task order project number for the, um, between the owner and the consultant professional, professional services that were originally dated November eighth, twenty eighteen.
Getting further along.
Task order, um, through twenty twenty. Um, basically the estimated compensation is twenty-nine thousand nine thirty-seven fifty. So they're asking that we authorize the chair to sign it adds in some Mills County properties. The tier-two site specific review has been completed and Phase One Archaeological Survey for the following sites and then, um-
You don't wanna make a comment that I build terraces and don't have to have this done? And now that we're using government money and stuff, we have to step through-
Check, check, and recheck.
All the loops and humps and-
So here is the, and here's the original, or here's the M F.
It took three years to get started.
He needs to sign on that line on the top, so, you wanna look at them? There you go.
And it's just Lonnie, right?
Yeah, it's just Lonnie. I didn't know if you wanted to look at it, see what they're doing or-
Yep.
You guys gonna make a motion to-
I would authorize the chair to sign the task order two point six point one, Phase One of the Archaeological Survey Part Two.
I second it.
Grant with J E O.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign task order two point six point one of the Archaeological Survey Part Two. C D B G Grant, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Um, with regards to the next two items on the agenda, I did, um, tell them that would probably be right around ten o'clock, so I don't think Julie and Lori will be down too much before that, I just guestimated the timeframe, so. We wanna take a fifteen minute break until they get here. Since I get a star for moving things along today.
Larry coming up?
Yeah, Larry will come up. But I kinda said right around ten or I can go get him to see if he's ready and basically you've got copies of the contract we're gonna be signing.
I've got about fifty things I need to sign anyway. Those of you listening will take a short recess and we'll see you back here in about ten, fifteen minutes. Everybody, we're back. It's a little before ten. We have Larry Hurst in here, E M A director, to discuss the hazard mitigation grant program, subaward agreement. Go ahead, Larry.
As you know, we applied here several months ago to FEMA because of this presidential disaster to participate in a hazard mitigation property acquisition project. And here, we were notified here within the last week, two weeks, that we had a brand approved for that project. And of course, we're here today to talk about the subaward agreement between State Iowa, which is managing this, the federal grant for for us as a pass-through, and Mills County. This agreement, we had a we had a required virtual meeting yesterday with State Iowa. There were several county representatives on that call, being Representative from SWIPCO, which is our COG, helping manage in this process through with us, and county attorney's office, the auditor's office, and myself. And we went through the entire agreement. Some of the highlights of this agreement is is typically these buyout projects like this are set up for three years, even though it's anticipated, the state anticipates this will not take three years to complete this, as he agreed. But this is a typical, they put that as a buffer because the federal government allows that. So this grant period runs from April ninth, two thousand twenty, April ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The total composite award of this, or value of this, is seventeen million, one hundred and fifty thousand and fifty dollars. And of course, there is a federal share of almost thirteen million. The state share is in the vicinity of around two million. And the county share is a little over two point five then. Now, it was discussed earlier that that county share would be made up from other from other funding that will be provided later on during this process. So as a county, we should be made whole in this whole process as we as we go through it. That was discussed yesterday. What we're here today is to take formal act, request the board, take formal action, then I have to get this signed and then sent back in to start the process. This grant, this agreement here is really for the acquisition only. There's two parts of this. There's an admin cost agreement and then there that FEMA has not yet processed. But we're going to go ahead, the state said, with this with this with this project that's been recommended and authorized. And so this is the acquisition piece only. So there will be another grant that we're going to manage parallel and admin piece, which is which I think is five percent, Carol, I believe, as well as discussed yesterday, for managing the grant through to end. The auditor was asked, typically what you have grants like this, you have to create a funding management process, which normally the auditor, as financial officer for this project, would create line items, project line items to manage the transfers and receipts specifically by different types of grants, as she does now. And so this is no different. Of course, we have our appraisals for the pre-flood. As a board, you can't go lower than that with this type of a project, but you could go higher negotiated if necessary.
We just appointed a board to do that.
Arbitration, yes, so that will work. And of course, the appeals board was discussed and you were discussing that today. The, once the the land, the acquisition is closed on, then the ninety-day demo period starts. Now, there is provisions that was discussed just today that by exception, you can petition FEMA for an extension. But it needs to be, that decision has to be made within sixty days. And once you get to that sixty-day period, you should already put a petition for an extension. It is hoped that we can manage this through, that we will not have to do that once we start acquisition properties and start the process. There's also discussed with SWIPCO that they'll be contacting the auditor, get on your agenda, to discuss contracts that have to be consummated between our COG and us now this project's been approved.
Getting back to the demo, Larry, are we gonna have a contract for each one of the individual properties? Or is this going to be a bunk?
I think it depends. I think it depends. And RFPs, there's several RFPs that have to go out, request for proposals that have to go out here probably soon that SWIPCO is working on, they're going to bring to you all. And I think it would depend on the strategies that is advocated by SWIPCO.
I was gonna say, what I, what I, when I, my conversation with Terry is, and with SWIPCO, is that they will bid the project as a whole, but they will also bid each one.
Individually.
Individual. So like, because your property and my property may not be the same. You might have two buildings, so each one is going to be broken down individually. So in the RFP, they will have all those addresses to, so that they have to look at.
To give us cost estimates, because otherwise, as with some.
For property.
Yeah. And that's that, that we want to make sure stipes stipified in the request for proposal. And it makes it easier to manage the grant to the end. As you, as you said, if we have properties fall off, because property owners decide to back off, or we can't negotiate a deal or something like that, or there's some delay.
It must be nice to get the wheels turning on those before we close on anything. That way, it's it's just one more step ahead.
So, yeah, so that was, so that was kind of discussed in length. Of course, she mentioned Terry, that's Terry Brown. He's from Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Division, mitigation and recovery bureau. He is our liaison for this project. And so he will stay with us through to the end. And of course, we have your finance officers also. Homeland Security has finance officers assigned to this also, which is a mitigation finance officer, which a lot of our our payments, money in and out, will be managed through that office at the State Homeland Security Emergency Management Division. The FEMA public assistance is what we're going to use, the public assistance from the Presidential Declaration for the demolition. That's not been approved by FEMA, but we're going to move forward. The state is saying we're moving forward. They have a lot of experience in this and other places in the state. They've done buyouts, not necessarily to this magnitude, but close to it. And so, but they're going to push FEMA pretty hard to try and and get the demo part of this done. So as we get the closings, we're ready, you know.
Yes, to act.
Yes, ready to act. So.
We can hit the ninety days if we get the wheels turning earlier.
There was some discussion about the three one thousand dollars, I think. And the certified, the issue about property owners relocate, relocate outside the flood NFIP, National Flood Insurance, mapping special flood hazard zone boundaries, if offered replacement housing benefit funds. In other words, they've got to relocate out to take advantage of those funds.
They'll have to have an inspection. They'll have to have, they'll be have to be outside the eligible, yeah, in the areas. And depending on, you know, the cost basis and what they're allowed to, you know, get between the two. You know, SWIPCO will be working very heavily with that part. And like I said, they'll have to be in compliance now. I did ask the question because I've had a few people ask me this question as to, okay, I was a renter and I might, you know, I rented from someone and I had to relocate. Will I be able to get that since I'm building? And the answer to that question is no. They don't, there is no provision also. The provision to help someone if they were to be renting, they would still be in the property today. So the only way they could get that assistance is if they're physically living in that property as we take it in the buyout. So no one, no one falls in that category because they're not living in the residence. So that's the answer.
I've asked SWIPCO in the call, and actually, we had a conference call about two weeks ago with SWIPCO between us as participants, that I wanted them to develop a, like a plan of action, milestone plan, like a timeline, something to manage from, different milestones that need to be occurred, like RFP development, payments, you know, quarterly reports, where you're required to do quarterly reports. Those will be managed through a web portal called E M Grants, is what it's called, to manage various federal dollars, grant programs through. So we'll be doing that similar as we are now with the mortgage assistance that we're doing to help people out.
Larry, back up. Carol, about the renters, but they did get help that they had lost all their. Yes, yes, in those situations. But there is a, there's a potential for a, you know, if they're moving to get a rent. The renter people to be, you know, helped because they had to go on just a portion. But the only way that works is if they were still living today in that property and the time at the buyout, and no one could be doing that at this point.
Nobody could either.
No.
And I think the other thing that was stressed yesterday, because we discussed this a little bit, because we've already answered a lot of these questions to the public that were interested in this project, is that if you receive, normally when. public that were interested in this project, is that if you receive, normally, if you have flood insurance, that's the first thing through a Presidential Declaration, FEMA will ask you, do you have flood insurance, for individual assistance. And then that's what they calculate your individual assistance on, based on need. And there's categories to that. There's categories for property damage, you know, your home, and personal belonging loss, temporary lodging. Those are different categories that will write you checks for, if you qualify, up to the level assessed by the FEMA rep. The money for the property that you got, say you got $30,000 from FEMA for that property, and we've talked about this before, if you don't turn, if you're on the buyout list and you do not turn that $30,000 into the property, you know, that was affected, which most people don't, then hopefully you kept that money in the bank somewhere. Because when you, if you're buying a new home, building a new home, or you already have, when you go to negotiate with the county, you all, based on the appraised amount, and once that agreement is made, what that number is, that $30,000, if it hasn't been put back into the property, is going to come off the top. And I want to, that's something clear that we discussed yesterday, that is confusing to a lot of people, that we have to make sure people understand. Because if you have a home that's appraised at $200,000, everybody agrees $200,000, but you're given $30,000 by FEMA, you know, you're going to get a check for $170,000. And so that's the bottom, that's how the federal, this is a federal requirement. It's federal law. It's not something that's made up locally, or the state's made up. This is how this program goes. And so that's the hardest process, I think, for the public. Even for me, this is an understand sometimes. But that's things we have to make sure we reinforce as we go through this process, I believe, keep everybody in the loop. Also discussed yesterday was, as part of this process, and I guess you all have discussed this, is that when county attorneys offices on the call, they volunteer elected to do a lot of the closing. Is that still true? We're going to use them?
Yeah, because they pretty much said, you know, they're going to be answering the questions anyway, for the county legally wise. And it's like Tyler said, it's not going to take that much more to do the closings on each one. And once you get, you know, your basic template, it just changes the numbers, people, whatever. And it's a pretty simple process, and they can, he feels they have no problems with doing it. Because even the question came up, I think Larry asked, well, what if you guys get courted or something, you know, whatever. And even in the course later on, they could go out, because you'd have to procure legal services, you'd have to go out. I mean, SWIPCO's the only one we don't have to procure because of the type that they are. But anything else, we would have to procure, which would be legal services as well. So they don't seem to have a problem with it. They, you know, they feel they're covered in the county attorney's office that they can easily take.
And we'll watch as we go through this. And in case something happens, and they get overloaded, I know Tyler will speak up, Assistant County Attorney, or NADA, and they'll say, hey, we may have to have some assistance. And then we'll advocate to you all that we go that route. So I think all in all, this is a good start. We got this check in the box, and now today is basically the formal action to sign the agreement.
Do we have a motion to approve or disapprove? I think anybody would want to not approve it.
Exactly right. I make a motion to approve the grant program agreement, DR-4421. Sub Award Agreement. Okay, okay.
We have a motion by Venton, and a second by Crouch, to approve the chair to sign Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR-4421, Sub Award Agreement. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
Well, like you said, it's another thing to mark off our checklist, right?
We're closer.
We're going to, once we, and I think the strategy is, from a public health standpoint, is that we're going to, our flood portal is still out there on the website, and so we're going to keep feeding it on our progress. That's why I wanted this milestone plan stored, so I could target, you know, what our goals are when we expect to have this.
Do I have to sign up on that too? I do, don't I, or not? Do I have to?
There's no attest on it.
Oh, okay.
Simple agreement.
All right.
Now, on these projects like this, the auditor is the alternate in the database. So in case something happens, or whatever, she is the alternate for the county for the grant.
Well, no pressure there.
No, I have all the wonderful, you know, all the Matt Woods's levy districts, too. I have to go through and okay, and I have to set up numbers for all of them.
Why aren't they, oh, that's because of the record keeping.
Yeah, because it comes through here, because our money flows through here.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst.
I'm waiting for, I think.
They're behind you.
I guess. I'm going to talk about this a little bit, and also the same yesterday.
Get down on those.
Good morning.
You guys doing anything?
Well, we have a couple of updates for you today. For COVID-19, we are approaching 6,000 confirmed cases in the state of Iowa. Mills County continues to have two confirmed cases, and both of those have recovered. Over the weekend, we had a case come in that we accepted. Lori did surveillance on, and that person is not actually residing in Mills County at this point, a person of record. So we tracked that individual down and handed that case off to the appropriate county. So over the weekend, you might have noticed that it said Mills County had three, but we did not, in fact. So we are holding at two.
I have a quick question. So somebody asked me this question, and I said, I have no idea. So when it shows that we have the two, and that they're all done with their, you know, having it, does that go back to zero then? Or does that just say you had two?
That will be a tally. And so we will always know that's the number. And that's the number of confirmed cases who have been tested and then added into IEDs through our Public Health Nursing Service.
That's just it. Pretty fabulous.
Yeah.
It's pretty darn good.
It is.
That being said, there's definitely cases, I've talked to lots of different people through this whole process, that have symptoms that are very, they very likely would have tested positive if they were able to be tested.
But Carol, I think we're turning the corner on some of these issues. And so I wanted to just visit with you a little bit about our case count, Test Iowa, and where we're going to go from this point forward. You probably did see yesterday that the governor released a new proclamation, and it's a targeted approach, and it loosens restrictions on some businesses, it holds other restrictions in place. And the governor said that she's making a shift from, you know, to contain and manage COVID-19 for the long term, and that she's trying to balance the health of the people with the health of our economy. And you get that. This is getting to go on for a long time, and it is creating a great deal of hardship, and we recognize that. So she had some changes that will go into place on May 1. And I don't know, you guys have that document for your review. So you can see that a number of businesses that have previously been closed will now be able to reopen with some restrictions in place. What you see kind of across the board is that they're asking other businesses to open up at 50% capacity. So you're more able to do social distancing. They're still asking restaurants, retail places, to be able to have six feet distance between customers in many of these areas, you know, to limit groups to not over, under 10, for instance, for like fitness centers. The one thing that is not prohibited, that has no restrictions, is our church services. So those have been, you know, you can go back to having church. However, the restrictions that are still in place are weddings and funerals, which are limited to 10 individuals.
And if you look at the proclamation, and I looked at this thing after we sent it out, and I kind of said, we probably shouldn't have put no restrictions. It should have been, there are considerations. Because in the proclamation, it does talk about that you have an at-risk population in a lot of congregations, elderly, pre-existing conditions, youth. And so last night, the bishop in Des Moines from the Methodist came out, and I was going to tell Monica to look at that, because my wife had called, well, his wife, about this, what we're, Methodist Church, for example, we use them as examples going to do, and she wasn't sure yet. Well, the Diocese of Des Moines was putting out, it was a very good dissertation, a paper the bishop had put out about concerns in the churches, and that we need to go slow, and we need to, basically, can be concerned about certain elements of our congregation, which is similar to what the governor was saying, as far as the elderly distancing. Like, I could see in queues visualizing families sitting together with some distancing, and then maybe still keeping the virtual YouTube-type videos going for the people that elect not to come. Because there's going to be, there's going to be a part of the congregations, and all our churches in the county, that are going to be a little scared or nervous. And so we want them to still, whatever churches we're streaming live, I would advocate they continue. But I think I would have changed the word on that, because it says no restrictions, which it's really, it means the proclamation says, but taking considerations, these elements that we just discussed. So I think that's the one thing, because I had somebody look at this, and I said, okay, tell me what you think. Boom, they zero right in on that no restriction word. And so, I don't know. But that's kind of what she said initially, but then they qualified.
And it is, she did a really nice job with this proclamation, because she really went into some fine details, which we were not able to fully capture in a press release. And we wrestled with that a little bit. And so we did provide this link at the bottom, because for a large part of our population, they just, they want it in a nutshell. Give me the highlights. But then another large part of our population wants to get into the fine details of it, because it's part of their livelihood, and it's very important to them. The governor did a really nice job in Section 1, and I'll just read that. She says, "I strongly encourage all vulnerable Iowans, including those with pre-existing medical conditions, and those older than 65 in all counties of the state, to continue to limit their activities outside of their home, including their visits to businesses and other establishments, and their participation in gatherings of any size for any purpose." So that's kind of a very important caveat that she put on the loosening of some of these restrictions. We still have that very vulnerable population that should continue to really be extremely careful and have great caution in this time. So, you know, and then she also, in the red, you can see in the press release, that there's a number of businesses that are asked to remain closed at this time. I can also tell you, as a public health entity, we get phone calls all day long of people trying to ascertain where they fit in, and what the exception might be, and what is allowable, and what is discouraged. You know, we have a lot of questions last week around the farmer's market. And I want to remind you that that's providing produce to the community, and that, in my mind, is an essential service. However you weigh that out with at a farmer's market, there's a certain culture of testing food, of being in close proximity, of not social distancing. And so we, Larry and I had a lot of discussions around that. Larry reached out to the Department of Agriculture, and subsequently, I think on Friday, the governor released specific guidelines around farmer's market. And we have passed those through to the community. So we are able to do farmer's market with some very good restrictions in place that I hope our county can honor.
At least we have that.
Which is good. And then, you know, we have questions, we've entertained questions on garage sales. And you know, it is the season where a garage sale is a question, and then questions of community garage sales. And I would say right now that the governor has not put out specific guidance in regards to that. But from a public health perspective, at this point, I would just discourage it. I don't think it's wise, it's not necessary. I know it's part of our culture, it's what we do in the spring, and I know it would give people meaning to be busy while they're at home, and maybe not able to do other things to deep clean, and to have a garage sale, and maybe make a little money. However, at this point, not having official guidance from the governor, I would still say, from a public health perspective, I would hold on it. I would just wait, because even though the governor is trying to balance the health of our economy with the health of our people, she's opening up things in a very measured way. And in my mind, whether or not you should do something, you should weigh it out, and your mind, is it essential? So if it is a very necessary thing for you or your family, you know, have some conversations around it, and decide what you need to do. But I would hold on garage sales. We also get conversations around graduation parties, because it's spring, because our seniors have missed out on so much. Can we still have graduation parties? Again, we're still in April. And what happens in the next two weeks or so will give us a lot of guidance. But at this point, I would hold.
Yeah, we're going to.
And I realize that that, I really do appreciate that that is discouraging. But I have to tell you, in the big picture, we've been in this for quite a while. And I would say that, as a whole, as a county, we have had really good support. I think people have taken COVID-19 very serious. I think with a broad scope, we can say people have really done all that we could expect, and then some.
Quiet around here on nights and weekends.
It is. If you drive around, it's pretty quiet. And you know, I have to say, we've had some good results from that. You can see, when you look on the map, that there's a lot of activity out east, and a lot of the most recent activity is in regards to some long-term care breakouts, and then, of course, the packing plant issues. But one of the things that has come out since the last time I met with you, but it's been out for about a week now, and I hope that you've heard about it, and it's the Test Iowa. So our governor has partnered with a, in a private, for profit partnership with a group out of Utah for this Test Iowa. The hope is Saturday it launched in Des Moines. So you can go online, you can take this assessment. If you meet the criteria, you would be approved for testing. We're hoping in the next week that testing will become more available than just.
They said they didn't need a test.
Yeah.
But did you get a follow-up, you had questions yesterday? Because I did. I did the testing, and I got follow-up questions, you know.
Did you?
Yes, yes. Pam and I both mentioned it, because we both said, hey, did you get that? And it's like, no, I didn't see it. Well, then they, you know, they just have follow-up questions, just to make sure everything went well over the weekend, you didn't have any news. So I think they're going to say.
So we're hoping that that's one issue for Mills County. It's been extraordinarily difficult to get testing accomplished. So we are hoping with this initiative, in the next week or so, that testing will be more readily available in our region. The governor has been reported that we, reporting that we have a huge amount of people who have participated in this Test Iowa thing. And I hope through that process, that'll be another step in us launching forward, with knowing where we're at, and where we need to be, and where we can further loosen restrictions, and where our hotspots continue to be. I also wanted to update you on our Iowa West Foundation COVID-19 Response Funds. You will remember the last time I met with you, that we got some emergency funding through the Iowa West Foundation. From the day we received that check until the day it was fully expended was five days. So the need for that was extraordinary. We did buy grocery gift cards to No Frills, Mulholland's, Russ's Market, and also to the Dollar Store, where people could get personal or household items. Those came in and went out as fast as could be. I wrote a final report to Iowa West to detail how the monies were expended, the number of people we were able to help, the cost per family, just collected the data that they requested, and they have offered to give us another round of funding. And so we're waiting for that check to come in, and then we will, we will open it up and do another round of that. I think it has been very helpful. We're also looking at, you know, we have the Mills County General Relief Program that's run through public health, that's funded by the Board of Supervisors. We have some dollars in there, and we're coming up to the end of the fiscal year. And I would like to consider leveraging some of those funds to somewhat match what we're getting from Iowa West, to maybe meet the need of families that are, kind of been in a rough spot in relations to their employment being disrupted, or having to be in isolation because of symptomatic themselves or somebody in their household. So we might look into doing that a little bit as we edge towards the end of the year. The only other thing that I wanted to run past you is that you might have seen documents that have come out in our local and state media around personal protective equipment shortages, and they continue statewide. And the Iowa Department of Public Health has implemented some strategies to prolong the use of the limited supplies that they have, and that's really been a nation statewide. the use of the limited supplies that they have, and that's really been a nation statewide. But I wanted also to update you that here in Mills County, we take care of a number of long-term care facilities. We check in with them daily, pretty close to daily, to find out how they're doing, what their needs are. And then Larry, we partnered with Larry, and Larry has been able to disseminate the PPE that's been requested of us, and I would tell you that right now, we're doing okay. We have enough PPE for what our current needs are, and I think we're holding strong and looking good. That could change, you know, if we had a very significant outbreak, or even a concern of an outbreak in a long-term care facility, they burn through PPE at a very high rate. But at this point, we're, we're doing well, we're conserving PPE, we're, we're not in any danger of having a shortage, or having to implement that higher standard of extending PPE that's maybe not originally set up to be used that way. So we're, we're doing okay with that. Any questions?
How many people did you end up helping? I know we did a lot of claims, but...
Uh, 82, 86?
I have a question on this COVID-19 website here. Governor Reynolds came out, of course, this was updated the day before yesterday, but the last few days she's been in the, good, where'd it go? All right, last few days she's been in the 350s, 500, somewhere in there. But this is, you know, this is case counts?
Right.
And date of illness? April 25th, 5.
Yeah, that's not accurate.
Right.
That's just not accurate.
April 24th, 12. I mean, it, it looks like we made the...
And you're only 250, and we're apparently over that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it looks like we've made our hump, and we're down to nothing, and that, that is not the case.
No, but I will forward your concern to the Iowa Department of Public Health.
Because then, I mean, there's 350 cases.
Scroll up to the top, Lonnie, and see the tabs.
Look at the link.
So look at current status. Oh, no, that's not it.
Go back to that, what's the title of that slide you were on?
Epi-Cur.
The Epi-Cur?
Yeah. But it's, it just doesn't jive with what she says or what this says.
It don't work at all.
So scroll up to that paragraph.
progression of 90 outbreak cases of death over time, also known as the what, curve? People who tested positive, this is curve.
So for instance, was this on the 26th?
This, this is updated today, I just refreshed it, so.
So is it updated for...
Nope, no, just, just the 26th.
It was, it's still what, the 25th on...
So on the 26th, we had 384 positive cases.
She's been up her 350s, around 400, and, and this is, I mean, if, April 17th, 239, and I would buy that, that's, that seemed to jive with, roughly with what she had. April 17th?
See, the more they test, the more potential they're going to have positives.
Without a doubt, yeah, yeah.
That's going to skyrocket that.
This, this isn't skyrocketing, though. This, this is dropping like a rock.
Just two days from there.
April 23rd, 37. You know, this is...
That's just not accurate. It's not accurate.
It's not, is it?
No.
Okay. I, I was just looking at it yesterday, and it was, it was throwing me, and I thought...
When people see that, they'll think, well, we're...
Yeah, right. Well, we will pass that concern on, because I don't think that's accurate.
Lori's fault.
We should blame Lori. We'll check on that.
It's just weird.
No, that's just not right.
Easy enough.
Thank you.
Do, do we want to say anything about the general relief, you know, she's asking?
I think she said this, we'll just kind of play it by year, and then as the fiscal year ends, if there's some left in it, we'll...
Okay, I mean, I'm fine, I just want to make sure the board...
Yes, yes.
Okay with it.
It's there for the people, we budgeted for it, but people need it, use it.
Perfect.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
And then, do either one of you, part of the courthouse is going to start opening up, you know, that's...
Not, not, not yet. I mean...
Well, no, but what I'm asking, what I want to know is if they would have enough masks and stuff, and we would need them. I don't want to wait till the last minute, and then they jump on Julie or Larry and say, well, we need masks to open.
Well, I can definitely speak to the mask issue, right? So we are conserving all PPE, and so what we would like for people who are not direct healthcare workers is to wear the cloth masks, which are problematic, I will tell you, they, they are hard to wear eight hours a day.
Well, this would be, they would be coming into the courthouse...
Yeah.
And doing business...
Not the paper ones, no, you're not saying the, like, the...
We are, we, we cannot...
No, I'm just asking, because we've got, we've got a small box that we've allowed, and this is down the road, because we still have to get our Plexiglas, we still have many things to do internally here before, but we're just kind of trying to work if the, you know, when the...
You measure that, your portals, make sure that Plexiglas you order will connect, because some of those are wired.
We know, and that's what we're looking to do, and, you know, we don't feel comfortable...
It is very heartwarming, as we had the governor release some of the restrictions yesterday, and hold some in place. We had a lot of feedback, for instance, your restaurants in Malvern, and a restaurant here in Glenwood, and they have both reached out and said, you know, we're not comfortable opening up yet. We don't feel like the timing is right, we don't feel like we can really guarantee the safety of our patrons and our employees, and we are just going to continue to do takeout until we feel, and you know what, I applaud that. So if you ha, if you at all have...
I think you'll see a lot of that, Julie.
The ability to slow down. I, I also understand that, in my mind, when I look at the restrictions that she's opened up, she's trying to help some businesses stay afloat.
Stay afloat.
And, and there is an economic well-being that you, you can't ignore, and there is a very big human well-being that, of course, we're deeply vested in. And then there comes a point where you realize COVID-19 is not going to go away, we're going to be in this for the long haul, and how do we continue to function, and make things work, and still keep our people safe, and, and weighing those two things out? The one thing I would suggest as a public health person is, if you have the capability to slow down the reopening, to still manage your business and make it functional, that would be strongly recommended. I do think in the next two weeks, you know, it, when we get to, to mid-May, we're going to have a, a much better...
Hopefully.
...point of, of operations here. But I would continue to encourage people to exercise caution and err on the side of, of slowing it down as much as possible, and then understanding some, some places need to, to get up and rolling with those.
And you know what, Julie, kudos to Mills County that...
Absolutely.
Has done so much takeout, trying to keep everybody going for the restaurants.
There has been a really beautiful sense of, of community through this event, and, you know, I think as a whole, our county has done really well. We've done an exceptional job...
Even a disaster last year.
In, in a really hard spot.
Absolutely.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
You bet. You bet. You both take care.
Keep us up to speed, let us know if you need anything.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, that concludes our meeting for today. If anybody has any questions, feel free to call any one of us or email any of us, and we'll see you again next week. Thank you.
Thank you.